Good evening. I just want to, before we get started, I just want to make sure that people online can hear us and that our technical issues are not. Anyone? Can somebody give us a thumbs up or something? Mr. Fritz, do we have anybody saying that they can hear? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We called the meeting to order at 5:30, upon which the board went into executive session. Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, which includes addendum to the agenda Superintendent's Agenda Item 4, as well as Personnel Consent Agenda 3D, 3E, 4, and other Board of Education Business Number 5.
So moved.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Approved. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Any corrections? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Mrs. Weber, can you please review the meeting protocol?
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Welcome, everyone, to our Board of Education meeting this evening, both here in person and for those of you who are attending with us virtually. As you can see on our first screen here, you can access the agenda. For those of you who are virtual this evening, our agenda and the minutes from these meetings will be available on our website on the Board of Education page. For those of you who have comments that you need to send to the board or would have requests for public participation, if you are attending virtually, you can send those public participation requests to our moderator for this evening, Mr. Fritz. His address is shown on the screen here this evening. We do have the chat feature available for those of you who are participating virtually. We do ask, however, that you don't use that for public comment, that that would be used only if we would have technical difficulties that we would need to be made aware, and that will be monitored by Mr. Fritz so that he can make us aware should any technical difficulties occur. So with that, I think we are ready to proceed with some really exciting presentations this evening.
Yes, it's always fun to start out the evening on a high note. I will turn it over to Mr. Lewis.
I was gonna say, I'll just be very loud. So we're always excited to bring good news to the board and to the community. And today, we're excited to talk about Montgomery Elementary and their recognition with the U.S. Department of Education as a blue ribbon school. So the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program Award recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools where students either achieve very high learning standards or make notable improvements in closing the achievement gap. And as you're aware, you know, Montgomery Elementary is one of the highest achieving elementary schools in the state. Since 1982, the U.S. Department of Education has sought out and celebrated great schools. The National Blue Ribbon School Award affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging content. And I can confidently say that because as a fourth grader at Montgomery Elementary, he feels great about his experience every single day, and I'm so thankful that he gets to attend that school. I am going to invite Dr. Debelak and her team from Montgomery Elementary up to be recognized, number one. But I would like, Dr. Debelak, if you wouldn't mind going to the podium and just sharing a little bit about the experience. I know you just got back from Washington, DC, and you know, just what you experienced there and maybe how the recognition went, just anything you'd like to share with the board about that experience. And please have the rest of your team come on up. Anybody that's here from Montgomery Elementary, if you'd like to come here.
Great, yes, thank you. We did have the pleasure of going to Washington, DC. Was it last week? Just last week? And we had an amazing time. And we do want to thank the board and our amazing district office for all of their support. Obviously, we would not have had the accomplishments that we've had at Montgomery without the support of everyone in the district. Montgomery and all of our schools here are exemplary. So what was so amazing about this experience is that our entire staff took part in the application process. We were nominated by the Ohio Department of Education, and then we did this massive application. And the beauty of that was that in the middle of COVID, we all got to stop and discuss instruction and students and growth and learning and curriculum. And it was this amazing gift that we were given in the middle of COVID, when everyone else in the country was talking about logistics and social distancing. We got to talk about kids and the wonderful work that we got to do, and it was really just wonderful. So we got to sit down and talk, Mrs. Furlong and I, last week, with all of the wonderful educators, and they talked about that gift as well and that wonderful experience that they had in talking about their students and the work that they do and how important it is. Do you want to share your experience?
Sure. So I will just say that it was an honor and a privilege to be able to be there representing Montgomery Elementary and Sycamore Schools. And to be there with almost like 325 other schools from across the country who had also, you know, who were also there being recognized was just phenomenal. And just a chance to interact with colleagues from across the country and hear everyone else's experiences and know that our hard work was recognized because we work really hard at Montgomery Elementary. And it was nice to be able to be a recipient of that award. So thank you, Board and District Office, for sending us. We've really had a great time, and we appreciate it. So thank you.
And Dr. Debelak, if you wouldn't mind introducing the rest of the members of your team that are here, just so the board knows who's here supporting you and supports you every day at Montgomery Elementary.
Yes, and also, we have the most amazing staff and families. And I know there are parents here. If you could also join us. We have a wonderful PTO who also took part in our application process and additionally supports our work each and every day. So it's so important that they're here as well. So we have Mrs. Furlong, who came with us, fourth grade teacher. Mr. Schwamberger is one of our fourth grade teachers. Mrs. Ennis, who is a special educator. Ms. Gans, our assistant principal. Mrs. O'Brien, Special Ed. And we have Mr. Johnston, who is our new PTO president. Ms. Richter, who is our vice president this year. Mrs. Green, you are also a vice president. No, of course, recording secretary. I apologize. I always get those fixed up. And Mrs. Fels, who is, was our PTO president last year, and this year she is one of our vice presidents. So thank you to our amazing staff. Does such wonderful work with our children. They are incredible.
Mr. Lovell, would you mind taking that team, that great team, and getting a picture for our website to make sure we recognize these great individuals for being here tonight? So thank you again, and thank you for representing Sycamore Community Schools and specifically Montgomery Elementary and the support that you give to our students. And, you know, we believe that great schools and great communities partner together. And, you know, you're a shining example, the parents, the teachers, the staff, everyone that supports Montgomery Elementary and makes, this is what makes Sycamore special, is the things that you all bring to the table every single day. So thank you so much.
Congratulations, Montgomery Elementary. It's wonderful. All right, moving on to our next recognition is the Sycamore High School National Merit Commended Students.
I'm moving around on you tonight, so. So we are proud to announce that we have 18 Sycamore High School seniors that have been named commended scholars in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. The distinction places them in the top 3% of all high school seniors in the nation, which is pretty impressive. About 34,000 commended scholars throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2019 competition, it still, again, places them top 5% of more than 1.6 million students who entered the 2019 competition by taking the PSAT. So these great individuals, here in a moment, I gave them assignment right before they walked up. So they, I don't think they were expecting an assignment right before they walked in because, you know, I know our team, and we like to hear directly from the students. You know, I can stand up here and read their names and tell you a little bit about them, but I thought it'd be more impactful to hear from them. So they got the shock when they walked in, and I said, hey, here's what you're gonna do. So they are gonna come up, they are going to give you their name, they're gonna talk about potential college choice, and then maybe a major that they're considering. So everybody good? Have enough time to think? All right. So I will, I will let them get started and get out of their way, so. And if you don't mind, when you're done, we'll line up here in front of the board, and then we'll, we'll come down and congratulate.
Hello, I'm Bishop Carl. I'm committed to go to Hope College, and I'm looking into mechanical engineering.
Hello, my name is Matthew Che, and I'm planning to major in biomedical engineering at Johns Hopkins.
Hi, I'm Kristen Close, and my top considerations for college are OSU and Miami University, and I'm planning to major in psychology.
I'm Grant Darbyshire. I'm looking about nine different colleges, and my major's gonna be business and entrepreneurship.
I'm Alex Neal. I'm planning on going to Rose Holman, and I'm considering mechanical engineering.
Hi, my name's Anisha Gambira, and I'll be majoring in electrical engineering at Purdue.
Hi, my name is Subishi Kasi Sanathan, or Thivya Kasi for short. I'm planning on majoring in neuroscience at Boston University.
Hi, my name is Grace Kew, and I plan on majoring in business analytics at Miami.
My name's Eliza Newton. I'm looking at University of Massachusetts, and I want to go into environmental sciences.
Hi, I'm Lani Pashadi, and I plan on going to Penn State to study nursing.
Hi, my name is Gemma Puli. I'm considering going to Georgia Tech or McGill University for mechanical engineering.
Hi, I'm Shomali Vaidya, and I'm looking at OSU and Purdue, and I'd like to study biomedical engineering.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Weiss. I'm looking at OSU, Berkeley, and University of Michigan to study sociology.
And the one thing I can confidently say is that the future is bright, my friends. The future is bright with all of these wonderful seniors. Let's give them one more round of applause as a group. Yes, thank you. And students, we would be remiss to let you go without recognizing some of the most important people in this room, correct? Who would I be talking about?
The parents.
The parents. Yeah, I'll tell you what. That's why you guys are the top 3% in the nation. If, if you are a parent of one of these great students, please stand so we can recognize you. Parents, please stand. So we would absolutely love for you to all stay for the rest of our meeting, but we completely understand if these students would like to go do other things instead of sit through a board meeting. So thank you, students. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Congratulations.
Mr. Lovell, would you mind grabbing these students before they leave for just a quick photo? Sorry, students, one more assignment for the night. One more assignment.
Congratulations, Darbyshire family. I think the students are taking a pit, wait, what did you say, Brad?
Mr. Lovell has an initial.
Okay, well, we, we just lost about 90% of our audience. We're not gonna, we're not gonna take it personally. And Mr. Burke, I hope you don't take it personally at all. Because I did preview your presentation. It looks amazing. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Burke, who is Representative at Great Oaks Campus.
I would say, you know, I know how to clear a room. Anyway, let's, so I am the Sycamore representative of the Great Oaks, and I'm gonna put a presentation together to give you an update on what's happening at Great Oaks as one of your, the representatives. So you'll see here, it's the largest vocational school in the state of Ohio, and it's serving actually six different counties and 36 different school systems. And, and they have actually one representative from every district, school district on the board. So there's 36 board members, plus Harry is 37. And there's four schools. You got Scarlet Oaks there on the left, and the amount of acreage they cover, that's in Sharonville. Diamond Oaks is over on the west side. And then you have Laurel Oaks. And Laurel Oaks is up in actually Wilmington, and Live Oaks is Milford. And you'll notice also, there's the Great Oaks logo in the bottom right-hand corner, as well as their 50-year anniversary. And it was actually kind of stifled, as many things were in 2000. Was there a 50-year anniversary of the Oaks? They celebrated in 2000, but as many things with COVID, it got a kind of squelched, but. So total reach, they have both adult programs and youth programs. So there's 13,000 adults are served in career, are prepared for careers, as well as 21, 24,000 students and anywhere from junior high up to high school or middle school, up to high school. Satellite program, they have a thing called a satellite program. There's 19 programs that are taught within the satellite program, and that's, the satellite program is where the actually teachers come and teach the students in each of the individual schools. Not every school has, I don't think any school has all the programs. We happen to have three programs. We had two, and the third one was added this past year. So the bottom left-hand quarter, you have the Gateway to Technology that is being taught at the middle school for the first time this year. And then you have teaching preparation, prior professions, and that is being taught in the high school, as well as the marketing program at the high school. So Mark Steely is a teacher of the marketing program, marketing management and research. He's been teaching there quite a number of years, and my oldest, my son had the pleasure of having him for a number of years. And everybody loves Mr. Steely, and Liz has also been part of that. She's a senior now. And she actually switched this year, and she's doing the teaching because she's gonna go into education. So there's a competition that these students are involved in called DECA, Distributive Education Clubs of America. It is international. There's gonna be 90 students that will compete this year. There's our regional competition, the state, and then if they qualify in, in the top, I think it's three or four in state, they go to international. In 2000, let's kind of go backward, 2018, we had 46 qualifiers to the international. The place is at state. We had 26 in 19 and 16, or 18 in 2028 and 2021. Last five years, Sycamore has received Best in Class Award from the state of Ohio in their DECA program. Teaching professions. So it's taught by Melissa Inkstro. She, this is her third year, if I'm not mistaken, going to teaching. And there's, excuse me, and there's 40 kids in this program. And in their classes, the schedule is on the top right. They also have an education, a competition, and that is called the Educators Rising Competition. And that's each year. I am not as familiar with that because I've never experienced it. I'm not sure if Liz is competing this year, but there's 15 out of the 19. We have students in 15 out of the 19 events, and they're highlighted in yellow. So this is to really prepare the kids to, in great program, to actually test them and see if education's really what they want to be. If they've already grown up and say, I want to be a teacher someday, it's a good test for them. Gateway to Technology. This is our first year with this program. And Gary Schuster is, this is not his first year, but his first year teaching at Sycamore Junior High. It's a new program and is designed to introduce students to the world of technology. Helps drive the interest in both science, engineering, and technology, and there's 77 students enrolled at Sycamore. Great Oaks as a whole. This is an eye chart. We actually refer to it as the Great Eye Chart at Great Oaks. But this is how they track all 20, actually, there's 19 programs on this. I mean, 29, sorry, 12 classifications and 29 programs. And it tracks their enrollment, and it definitely, it looks a lot better when it's blown up and it's in front of you. But it's truly, this is how Great Oaks looks at the enrollment on a regular basis. You know, ninth, 10th grade and 12th grade, so the first year and the second year, and tracks the enrollment typically. It always falls after the first semester. People say, yeah, that's not really what I want to be or do, and it's better that they find out their junior year instead of going all the way through and finding out when they jump in feet first. And it's not really what they want to do. So it's, they, we look at this on a monthly basis at the board meetings at the Great Oaks. Excuse me. Enrollment with Sycamore. So there's actually five schools here, and we talked about four. The, you can see Diamond Oaks, we have one student. And the second one down is a unique program for IEP students that is to get them ready for work career. It's you connected with the Children's Hospital and also Xavier University to provide programs for the impaired students and help them get integrated to a work program. And actually, they're trying to get Fifth Third back on board for their Fifth Third check processing, processing program. Laurel Oaks, you can see there, I, sorry, I can't see that far, but was it, how many pro kids? Two at Laurel Oaks? And, and then you got Live Oaks. I think there's what, 30 or 16? Is it? Six, sorry. Oh, there you go. And and then our largest number is 46, 48 at Scarlet Oaks. As you can see, our numbers are increasing year after year. And a lot of people look at vocational school as, oh, my kid's not going to college? What is this? It's education. Education is preparing kids for their future or success for career, and depends on how far you want to go with that education. This does involve a high school diploma, and it teaches them a career path and, you know, and so they actually, when they finish their senior year, they can actually go into carpentry, electrician, or any one of those 29 programs and start making money right way, right away. I remember there's a family here in Sycamore. Their two daughters went to Sycamore, then went on to college. Well, their son comes along, the third one, and he doesn't want to go to college. He made that very clear his sophomore year. He wanted to go to the Oaks. The parents absolutely had a fit. They said, my son is going to college. And he says, he kept arguing with us, it's not for me. He ends up going to the Oaks. He ends up becoming a plumber. And before he could buy his first legal beer, he was able to buy his first house. And his sisters at the time were still paying off their education. But, so again, it's not for everybody, but it does give them another path. So as you can see, the numbers are going up, which I very encourage about that. There are 30 programs. Um, there are thirty programs that are taught at the Great Oaks for the high school, the students. Uh, at twenty-one different programs uh for the students and at four schools. Actually, five, if you count the um the other two students or actually one student now. Most popular program enrolled at Sycamore, there's eight in the automotive and refinishing and collision repair. And there's two, uh second most was uh is the um web application and gaming development. And there's six in that, and there's seven other programs with four students. But we get a report of this, um and I actually can forward that to you so you know how many are in each program. New construction. So the Great Oaks has been working on revent renovating all their facilities. They've done Diamond, they've done Scarlet, and they are now working on Laurel. Actually Laurel Oaks just had their um their opening ceremony this, at the beginning of the school year. Or actually, right in the summer, right before the school opened. And so this is up in Wilmington, right near the airport, uh very open. That's their cafeteria to the right. And um then they have a student section hallway where they can actually congregate and have local, uh small focal, focus groups as well. And Live Oaks is in Milford, and they actually are really changing this around drastically. This will be a two-year construction project. It just started last year. And as you can see, there is pretty much the same type of theme uh with the Oaks as there is with Sycamore. And you know, the kind of the high-sail um terminal type of look for each of their buildings. So it does have a lot of the same feel. I really like the whole student gathering area to the right of this one. And so, and they're actually changing it so you can actually enter on route twenty-eight right from the school. And you don't have to go on um the side street. So the traffic should improve to when they get this off fenders. So that's basically my report. We meet on a monthly basis and there are separate committees. I actually happen to be on the building and um facilities committee as well. And last year I was on the programs committee and I am also on the diversity program. Any questions? Okay.
No problem. It's interesting. I I've hired two of our Sycamore Great Oak students. And that they are going to college too now. Yeah, so they do kind of like to save some money up for that. I appreciate you bringing that up. One of the things we've been talking about recently is one in four of Sycamore's senior class will go off to college this year. And at our rate, in six years from now, they still won't have a college degree. And we know about the stigma to participate in Great Oaks. And when I talk to the Great Oak students that are in it, they would love the idea of being able to attend classes in the high school building, like these satellite programs and really have an expansion of that. And I know that Mr. Maders wanted to encourage more students on that path and maybe get to them a little bit earlier. My question is, does Great Oaks have an exploratory course for all the great things that they offer? That they can run as a satellite program here in our buildings? Because I remember, you know Ken?
Yep.
Mr. Richter, he worked hard when he was the rep down there to get uh Great Oaks permanently funded. We'll never see another Great Oaks levy again because we've already paid for it.
Forever.
Yeah, it's forever. So it's with that permanent funding, it we, is there an opportunity for us as Sycamore? To be able to realizing the numbers of what we have, to be able to take advantage of this, introduce kids more to these, some of the things they have to offer?
I think it's really important for the counselors. They know the students and teachers know the students that probably aren't college-ready or mindset of college-bound. And I think it's really important for them to encourage students to visit the Great Oaks and do the tours and stuff like that. They've, they'll do tours and you can actually, doesn't matter which uh school you want to go to. They're not, none of them are on the same day when they have their open house.
Yeah.
And I guess that's probably up to me to, to really push that and make sure that our students are aware of that. And you can still participate in sports. I know several students that I have participated in sports. And um because they think, well, I'm going to the Great Oaks, I can't participate in sports after school. Yes, they can. They get back in time and um, I mean, they have a chef program, they have a vet tech. They have, you know, first uh like an RN first assist for assisting in surgical procedures. And and obviously um hair cutting and stuff like that. So there's a lot of great programs and I can also provide you guys with the complete list of students without having to look at that other eye chart of the
But you don't know if there's a satellite program to offer a course that is kind of just explore the Oaks?
No, but that's not a bad thing to, I think it'd probably be better instead of having during the day, maybe have it after school or even before school. I'm not sure if you're going to get kids before school, but maybe after-school program. And um one day a week and just kind of talk about the different programs and have the uh professors. But um anything done at the school, I think, has to be approved by the um union. Any additional programs, but um teaching, so.
Thank you.
Very protective on that side. Okay.
Mr. Burke, thank you for a great presentation. Is, is there more we can do to educate our parents? Because you know, I do agree with you that our counselors know our students well, but I think the parents know them even better. And sometimes it's the parent stigma over sending their child to the Oaks.
Uh, it is absolutely the parent stigma and I think stories like that one um family is you kind of, it hits home with me when I heard it the first time. And that was actually at the open um thing that the the counselors did with all the students and parents.
Great, thanks.
Anything else?
Mr. Burke, I'm glad to see that our numbers are rising from Sycamore students. I know we were hovering there for a little bit in the forties, but now we have almost sixty students there. So I think it's great that students are finding their paths. And I think that um we all acknowledge that there are many, there are many valid paths and college is not the only one. So I'm so glad that we as a community have that as a resource. So thank, and thank you so much for your service to that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, um public participation section of our agenda. Ms. Coleman, I think you um have asked to speak. And you're ready, you will have three minutes. And Mrs. Wagner, would you mind timing? Thank you so much. Thanks. When you start talking, she'll just, great, thank you.
Okay, my name is Debbie Coleman. My address is eighty-four oh one Chesney Lane. I am the Ohio Director for Start School Later. You have probably seen my name on countless emails over a number of years, and now you're seeing me face-to-face. The problem, two early scart, school start times are actually a national public health concern with consequences. The solution is to restore traditional school start times as recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, and yes, the Centers for Disease Control. That's known as the CDC. You've likely heard of them. The call to action is to leverage this opportunity as we are compliant with CDC guidance and paying attention to everything they recommend. That we go back to nine years ago when they said schools for middle schoolers and high schoolers should start after eight-thirty AM. You turn the page, you'll find that after ten years, why are we still here? Well, where is here? We are too early. Our first bell at the high school is seven-twenty AM. That's a wake time of about five-forty-five if the bus collection time is six-thirty. Eight oh seven is the average school start time. Now, I don't know if you know about averages, but you can imagine what a seven-twenty start time does to that average. There'll be a map attached to your um packet that shows you the average start times by state. The adolescent circadian rhythm shifts by two to three hours when they hit puberty. In other words, they cannot naturally fall asleep until two to three hours later. We are laggards in changing our start time. Indian Hill, Mason, Lakota, Forest Hills, Cincinnati Public Schools. And yes, the school district that I left in Anaronda County with seventy thousand students and I chose Sycamore over them has just changed their start times. Please do your research. Furthermore, we have no excuse. California has just adopted the first state legislation. The Center for Disease Control, the National Institute for Health, the American Academy of Pediatrics. They have all said start time should be eight-thirty or later. Data supports that when you change that start time, they don't change their bedtime. They will get more sleep. Tardiness, absences and auto accidents decrease. There is a CDC handout in your packet that tells you about all of the other health consequences of sleep debt and sleep deprivation on our students. I challenge you to find a medical doctor that would write you an excuse to start schools at seven-twenty AM. And as you consider how our students are sleeping at night, I'd like you to sleep at night on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. All right, moving on to our superintendent's agenda, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. Uh, we will get started by just uh updating you on the school calendar. Um, so I appreciate uh the board allowing us to, uh, you know, this was myself. Uh, Mrs. Wagner, Mrs. Tompkins, Mr. Lovell and uh Mrs. Jackson in our office. This was our first time going through the school calendar, so I appreciate your uh grace and patience as we worked through it. And really allowed us to make some mistakes, but you know, learning from your mistakes is what we're all about. So uh this calendar, we now have option five, so we abandoned one through four. Uh, option five, I think, really captured what we were trying to accomplish, which we took your feedback, we knew. And you know, I shared with our team, you know, we're, we, we cannot have a significant reduction in instructional time. We need to find those days and we need to make it work. Uh, so I want to provide you some of the highlights. I'll start with kind of the first part of the calendar. Um, you will see that there are three professional days for staff professional learning and collaboration at the beginning of the school year. Uh, the transition days that we had, uh, the previous couple of school years remain. Uh, those have been highly successful. There's been an importance on, you know, relationships and also setting those PBIS expectations uh for the first couple of days of school that have been so critically important. Um, staff collaborate, collaboration days in November. Everything else is pretty traditional. Uh, what you will see, uh, go back one slide, sorry for um Bill. One of the things that you will notice is that there are no professor, personal learning days in the calendar as we traditionally had. So like, uh, we normally would have one in like, let's say, September or October. We pulled that out and we decided that the three collaboration days in front of the calendar uh before the staff workdays that are contractually obligated. And then the two in November would better set us up to address, you know, our air data, our map data when we receive those. So uh timeliness. So we also believe that those three before uh school will allow us to really dig into that curriculum audit. Spend some time on that curriculum audit and really set that course for the school year with our teaching staff uh right alongside us. So we're very excited about that um change in the calendar. And then um you can advance the blue uh or the, I, I, it looks bluish-purple to me. But the ends of the quarters are teacher records day. There are three uh throughout the uh school year. One of the things that we did to squash the calendar and be able to grab instructional days, as you'll note, those are student personal learning days. And in order to be able to still maintain the number of student days that we needed, but also to try to find ways to uh hold up our contractual obligations, we needed to find ways to squeeze those in without trying to expand the calendar. Because if you think about it, we had a lot of challenges with this calendar because we're trying to accommodate construction as well. Um, so in order to do that, that's a model that we um picked up from our neighbors in Mason. Uh, it's something that they've have done to be able to have not only records days, but collaboration days built into their calendar. Uh, for us at this point, they're records days and obviously student personal learning days so that they can gain. Uh, and what we would expect during those days is that uh for our teachers to provide them opportunities to continue to grow in their personal learning, but they would be obviously right with their curriculum and right with their pacing guides uh that flow into their uh coursework. So uh the students would just be completing those at home uh during those already scheduled off days. And then um you can see the normal and traditional breaks and, and things that are, are listed in here. I will note that you can see that, you know, we have a, a little bit of an oddity in our calendar again. To be able to meet the needs of the length of the calendar, we had to kind of squash a little bit of the winter break. And you know, it's just so that the holiday fell on a weekend. So it, it, you know, we had to capture some of those days that we more, may have normally not have captured. So where you would normally see a ten-day, I would say roughly a ten-day or ten-school-day break there, we have an eight-school-day break there. Uh, but I, I will tell you, after looking at this frontward, forward, backward, sideways, that's just the way it has to fall. So I know that will bring some disappointment, but eight days is still a lengthy break with weekends. That's still a pretty lengthy break. And uh I want to caveat this by saying nothing that we've done in this calendar sets the course for future years. Because this was the calendar, the challenges we had to tackle here, we may not have to tackle those challenges in the future. We do know that next year's calendar, if this one goes through, will obviously have challenges next year with construction. And then we should be out of the woods with construction, hopefully after fall of twenty-three. So uh but I think it's important to point that out to our community. Um, and then we'll go forward. The last uh couple of pages here, uh what, the challenge that we had, I know we communicated this to you. The spring vacation day is in a, a, a day that off for uh our classified staff in their contract. So it was obligated that we put it in. And really, the other, I would say, huge highlight here is that we were able to, at one point, we were talking about beginning the high school and junior high at a different time than the rest of the buildings to accommodate that construction schedule. By squashing this, we were in pushing it together and finding those additional days. We were able to keep the entire district on one calendar and have our construction team feel comfortable with the dates that we've allotted. So first day of school uh of transition days, uh August twenty-ninth leading to a May twenty-sixth ending, which is pretty traditional for our school year now. And you'll notice some staff workdays and some additional staff collaboration days going away to accommodate the teacher workdays. There is one day that's not listed on this calendar. It, it's basically to exchange for conferences. You may recall, we just had one recently where K through eight was not in session because there were during the day conferences for K to eight. We did remove that from the calendar to be able to gain an instructional day. Because from my understanding, listening and talking with the principals, uh talking with the administrators, people have really gravitated towards the evening conferences and they really appreciate the ability to join virtually. Um, I had my first experience not only as a parent here in the district, a virtual conference, but my student-led parent-teacher conference. So my son at Green had to lead the conference, which was very interesting in and of itself. So um I, he did a good job. So I was very proud of him. They're, they're doing some great things over at Green, teaching these students how to advocate for themselves. So you'll see, that's one additional conference exchange day that's not listed. But if we're going to have two conference evenings, you know, uh additional conference evenings on, of, above and beyond what we have now, that would accommodate for that extra day to get us to the total of one-eighty-five for uh teaching staff. So um, team, anything that I left out, forgot, didn't cover?
I'm gonna ask a question now. How does the student days ref, how does that relate to what we've done in the past? Are we gaining, staying the same, losing? Second question is, the student personal learning day, are staff coming and doing professional development that day or collaboration? Or is it no school for everyone?
So the staff on those records day are, are working, basically, it's the, the normal records day. They're, they're coming in, they're working, they're, they're providing basically the end of the quarter grades. They're getting all that wrapped up for the quarter. So they're assigning work to students to complete from home to be able to contractually have those days, but to continue with us counting them as student days, there has to be some work assigned. If they just stay home and don't have any assignments or don't have any curricular materials, then it's just a day off school and we can't count it as a school day.
No, I understand that. I'm asking, what are the teachers doing on that day?
It's a teacher records day, so they're, they're completing their records.
Mr. Fritz, can you move the slide back up so I can just see what it looked like? Because it looked like they had a, I thought it looked like a teacher workday. For example, um, one, oh, it's just end of the second quarter.
Yeah, one thirteen, yeah, one twelve would be the end of the quarter, one thirteen is their records day with that personal learning day. But if you go one more back, Mr. Fritz, so the staff collaboration days would be student days where they're personal learning. But then the stu, the, or the teachers are coming in to collaborate on those days. And then this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So back to the first question about the number of student days. I know that, you know, everyone's concerned about that. We don't want to cut the number of days our students are actually in the classroom. How does this compare to the last few years?
So we went back to sixteen seventeen and it's an increase of comparative to each year, either three or two days. In a, of an increase comparative to what we had. So not only are we dealing with the construction challenges, we actually increased instructional time. And I, obviously I have another recommendation for a calendar change. I'll mention it again when we get to that calendar change. But our district team, we call our flight team, we have made it a point to, it's, we called it lessons learned from the pandemic. We have, we have learned that the best place for our teachers is not in district-directed professional development during the day. Because that leaves our classroom devoid of the experts that we know need to teach our students and, and gain that valuable instruction. We have made a commitment that we are not pulling them out as much as possible. And I, I'm not aware of very many opportunities where we have pulled them out of the classroom to do any, we, we completely eliminated committee work happening during the day and pretty much any professional development. There may be a few things here and there that we do have to accomplish. But for the most part, I'm looking at Mrs. Tompkins and Mrs. Wagner, they, they're both shaking their head. It was important to me that we stopped doing that because it's a bad model. It's a bad model to pull our teachers out where they need to be in there with their students and our teachers felt that. So, you know, I, I know some community members said, why would you take away instructional days right now in the middle of this and you're reducing instructional time? Actually, if I compared it, which I haven't, but if I did, I would be able to probably prove that we've increased instructional time a ton comparative to previous years when we were pulling teachers out and getting subs and spending extra dollars on subs. We're not doing that anymore. So this also accomplishes that same goal. Yes, in the future, would I'd like to not have as many personal learning days possibly, but we'll see how this goes. It's a, it's a new experience for us. And if it goes well, then maybe that's an opportunity. But when we, when you get met with a challenge that we have, you meet the challenge by being creative and finding new solutions that may be different than the past. And, you know, I'm proud of our team for committing to making sure our most valuable resource, our teachers are, are in there teaching our most valuable assets, which are students. We, we've got to invest in our students and give them what they deserve every day when they're in the classroom.
Mr. Lewis, I do just, I want to add my comments. I appreciate, you know, this revision five is, is, I think accomplishes a lot more than the other revisions. And takes into account not only the student days increasing in classroom time. But also not inconveniencing parents with different start dates for different age groups. So appreciate the hard work of the staff and, and I think this is a good solution to our challenges with construction. So thank you.
So, Mr. Lewis, I would echo Mr. Balance's comments on appreciation of this evolving in this way. I'm just not sure I understand the difference yet between the light blue student personal learning day and the yellow professional learning day. I understand it how it's different for the staff. But for the students' perspective, are those days that students are doing work remotely? Or are the, on, on both colors or, or just the, the light blue?
So it depends on, so the two at the end here, obviously they're out of school and they're not doing it on those days. The coding of the colors has nothing to do with the students. It's just what it means to the staff for their workdays. But if, Mr. Fritz, if you go back a couple of slides. So the light blue is a teacher records day, and that's what the light blue color signifies. But that is a day where student personal learning is occurring. So yes, they will be at home remotely working on relevant content that is directed by the teacher to continue on with their coursework. It's not, you know, like I remember the term Blizzard Bag a few years ago to get away from snow days. And it's not that, you know, we're, our, our teachers obviously have developed a wide variety of materials and things that they need because they knew that they could go remote at any time through this pandemic. So they have developed such good strategies and materials that they feel very comfortable, that they can give an assignment. They can utilize those strategies that they now have and put something into place. And, and I mean, I, I've experienced it as a parent, the, the student can go home and do that learning and that instruction and be prepared for the next school day.
Okay, that, that was crystal clear on the, the blue and the student for personal learning days. But the professional learning days, and I'll just specifically ask, on the twenty-first and twenty-second of November twenty-twenty-two, those Monday, Tuesday before Thanksgiving, will there be, will, are those counted as instructional days for the students? Will they be also be doing work on those two days remotely?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's how we, and, and are those days that are remote part of the one hundred and seventy-five student days?
That's correct.
And so do we know what the number of in front of teacher days is? If I subtracted those out, do we know what the delta is?
I'd have to go back and count them. I did not do that. There's more than that. Looks like five total, Mr. Comifer.
So it'd be one hundred and seventy instructional in front of teachers and five remote learning, if you will, in the calendar. I just, I just want to make sure I understood how the calendar was working. So thank you.
Mrs. Wagner, do you know the, what's the minimum requirement of student days for the state of Ohio?
It's by hours and I'd have to look at, to get the exact number for the different grade levels. But we are in excess, and I, I have a document I can pull up here, but we're in excess of enough days that if we had, if we had snow days or something like that, we would be fine. So we've got the required number of hours per year for half-day kindergarten is five hundred four, for full-day kindergarten, it's one thousand thirty-eight, which comes out to be roughly a hundred and seventy-three days. We've got the hours, again, because they change from days to hours for grades K through four, it's one thousand fifty. Five and six, it's one thousand one hundred eight, and then it increases from there. But we are significantly over the mandate, if you will. So for kindergarten, we're seventeen days over for a half-day. We're twenty-one days over for a full day. Elementary, we're twenty-three days over. Green, we're thirty-one days over. So we, we have a significant number of days over the minimum required by the state.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just to confirm that these number of instructional days are in increase from what we've had in years past?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And so our, our, our task would be to bring this, unless there are any communicated changes, to bring this same calendar back for approval at the December first morning meeting.
I think it looks great.
I'm gonna try to use my projection voice next time. All right. Moving on, master facility plan update.
Mr. Lovell's ready to give his rousing master facility plan update.
Well, good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. I had an opportunity today, actually. Now that the work is progressing on both EH Green and the junior high site, we're getting out more and more and walking the site with our contractors. And so I had the opportunity to do that today with Mr. Dur and Mr. Foster. Significant amount of mud at the same rate, significant amount of progress. And so I'm happy to report to you, as usual, we remain on time and on budget across our project. So I'm going to be walking through some of these picture or some of these slides here for you. Give you some high-level updates as I typically do, but just as a reminder, anybody out there, if you want to see some up-to-date pictures and things that are going on, you can always follow us on Twitter at Aviator Biz Ops. Have a couple of videos from my time out there today that I actually put in the slide. So here at Sims, you can see the progress continuing. Just a reminder, our finish line for this project is going to be in January. You can see the stage taking shape there, and these are some interior pictures that Mr. Fritz went to to show some of the indoor extra classroom space. And so remember, Area A, we're finishing up that area, which will be our first grade area. So when we move preschool over, we'll make a switch there. You can see the completion of the back playground, which will end up being our early childhood playground. It looks fantastic. We still need to work through getting a fence around that property. That was part of our supply chain issue. So we've got that coming, so we're excited. And then that picture on the right there, you can see the media center renovation. And what's really exciting about that is that that picture was actually before the floor was installed and the base and all that stuff is out of there and we're starting to move books into that space. And so it's really exciting to see that area take shape, especially with the studio that sits right outside of that. I know Ms. Ralston and her crew are very excited to get the media center out of the gym and actually in its space. And so I recommend, if you, I highly recommend if you're up there to stop by and see that. But we're hoping to actually get our temporary occupancy on that space soon. Moving on to green.
And Mr. Lovell.
Yes.
Mrs. Weiss, as a former parent, was like, oh, the Kiva's gone.
The Kiva is gone, yes. There's mixed emotions about the Kiva. Excited that we'll probably have less accidents with the hole in the ground, but excited as well because it gives us more space. So moving on to green, I want to stop here for this photo. Again, a shout out to our partners at SHPR Architectural Firm. They come out once a month and take these fantastic photos for us. I'm excited. I can't wait to actually do something with all of these when they're done to kind of show the progression of what has happened on that property. But if you look at the photo on the left there, oh, sorry, if you look at the photo on the left there, I just want to point out kind of what you're looking at. So the left part of that photo, you'll see to the far property line, that is our new bus circle with our academic wing. And then in the middle, where you kind of see the metal without any roofing on it at the moment. That's where the cafeteria is going to be. And moving to the right is where the front office is going to be located, kind of administrative area. So you can kind of see how that works. And as a reminder, we're going to be taking over the gym and the current cafeteria of the old green, which will tie in. That project goes a little bit later than the opening date, but it'll all be completed there. And so very excited to see that. And I do want to point out, because we've talked about this over and over again. The roof is here and it was on schedule. Multiple deliveries are coming. Yes, we can give a round of applause for that. That was our, that was what we were waiting on. So we're very excited about that. So they're getting the roof on there and you're now starting to see things dry up on the inside, walls go up, starting to build out. Okay, took this video today and kind of see, this is the picture of the cafeteria looking into the kitchen area. Behind you there was the stage area, which leads to the media center. If you want to move on to the next slide there. This video right here is looking into the, what they call the lower courtyard. And this is looking at the academic wing. And so again, you'll notice, you could kind of see from that still shot of that video there, you'll see the classrooms and kind of looking into ELA, the extended learning areas of that area. And the picture on the right there, top right, is kind of the academic hallway. So it's, it's really cool to be able to start seeing some of those. This is from the back. So this would be if your back is standing the Hagawa Drive. You can see the academic wing there on the left. Again, we're looking up towards the cafeteria there. And then to the right will be the academic wing. And you can also see kind of there on that corner is where all the, what we consider maintenance components of the building, the boilers and things like that. And just a reminder, and you'll, you will see probably a change order coming by. We are reusing the boilers from the old EH Green, but because we're doing that, they have to create temporary doors to get those in. Typically, what you would do is you'd build the walls around the boilers. Because we can't do that because the building's still operating, they had to figure out a way to get those boilers over. And it'll work out great, minimal cost to change that, but they want those doors in long-term. It'll actually be helpful for us to be able to do ongoing maintenance of those boilers. Just a few more pictures, you can flip through here, some steel progress, brick masonry, the whole building should be wrapped in a short time, other than the administrative area. If you drive on that site, you're actually going to see that the administrative area, the walls aren't up yet. And you might think, well, that's odd, why are they doing so much over here? They tell me that's the easiest part of the project. So they want to focus on the classrooms, they want to get the cafeteria, that area done. And then the administrative side, because it's just one floor will go up really quick. So you can see the upper level. I, I heard from somebody in the audience, there were a lot of concrete trucks heading in there the other morning. Very early, I've learned that concrete trucks get up and start moving at one to two AM to do early morning pours. So if our community wonders why we have concrete trucks out early, that should be some of the, the last work with that because that was laying that second floor slab. Very exciting here. I, I do want to report to you, and I want to make mention that we did our last proof roll and it passed. No more mitigation. And you'll see they've laid the black top here at EH Green. So this is the first layer. It'll remain like this for a really long time, but they did that because they, a lot of mud. They wanted to get that down so they could make sure the trucks were coming in to be able to finish the inside. So green, you're going to see a lot more work done on the exterior than probably the interior at this moment. That was strategic so they could get it under roof, get that figured out, so they can focus the winter energy all on the inside. And you might see that a little bit with the junior high pictures. So moving on to the junior high, again, we'll start out here with your aerial view. You can see the progress. This site's fun. It is tight. I'll tell you what, when you walk around there, there's not an inch to spare on that property of where they're not doing work or something. Right there, you're looking, that, that drone photo on the left, you're looking at the gym and theater area out towards the academic area. And to the top left is where the cafeteria administrative music and art kind of wing is. This is a quick video of what I shot today. So again, this is looking kind of at that cafeteria area, maintenance mechanical. So the front of the building would be on their side of that big retaining wall. So that's the area that they're moving towards. And one of the reasons why that was at this stage is because remember, we had to get the transportation facility off that property. And now that we're moving towards that, they can start building out that way because some of it will go over top of that space. Here's an, if you take a look at this, this is, actually, that's labeled incorrectly, I apologize. This is looking kind of into a courtyard area. So there's academic areas on both the left and the right. But in the middle of that video, this is an ELA section, but in the middle of that video, you can kind of see the gym and the theater area taking shape. Remember, there's going to be a courtyard in between those two. They'll be connected through the front, through the administrative area. But there'll be a courtyard connecting the academic side. So you can see some pictures there, slab pores that are ongoing, steel framing, see how it looks a little bit more put together with some framing on the inside. Just a reminder too, the, the junior high is almost double the square foot of EH Green too. So there's still a significant amount of work, which is why it takes an extra year. And you can see the brick masonry going up there. All right. So moving on to Sycamore High School, as you know, this is kind of a rolling construction project. Classroom hallway renovations continue to occur. I feel like each month when I show these slides, it looks kind of similar. It's because the academic areas are transitioning into very similar looking spaces. So you'll see those updates. You can see here that they are working on some of the railings and what we would call the hub and the, the commons area. There's baffling that kind of goes around that area that's going to tie that all in together. We had temporary railings that were placed up over there, so they're starting to put the permanent railings on. You can see some more pictures of just some of the spaces being renovated. There as well, an area J, and I'll be very completely honest with you, I get those areas confused. There's so many different areas, but, so I can't exactly, that might be the math wing actually right there. The other thing too, as we mentioned, I believe at the last meeting with the high school. Because it's a rolling project, bid packages for furniture go out in different stages. And currently we have a bid package out for furniture now for the high school. Is that the last slide? Yeah, that's it. All right, great. So that's, those are the projects. Any questions that you may have for me?
From meeting to meeting. I can't believe it.
It does. It really does. And, and just a shout out to our contractors, Monarch, Greybach and HGC. I mean, they, um, in the midst of everything's going on. Um, to be able to pull the work off that they're doing, remaining on time and on budget, they're doing a phenomenal job. Both of the sites today, it's amazing how many people are out there working. And doing different things and the coordination of everything that's happening. Um, and thank you to them for allowing us to come out, walk the site. And ask the many probably ridiculous questions I asked that, or at least they think they're ridiculous. I don't, but. Um, it helps me better understand to be able to explain to you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Level. It's great. Mrs. Weber, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
I don't have anything, um, regarding the construction itself. I do just want to make you aware that we are planning on, at our December first meeting. To provide a more comprehensive update on our budget status for all of the projects. So you can see. We've hit a couple of milestones, um, with some of our soft cost areas, as well as we're getting ready soon with Sims. To start looking at potential, uh, reallocation of some of the dollars within the budget overall. So. Just want to bring you up to, to speed on, on all of those things that are December one meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. We'll look forward to seeing that in the upcoming meeting. All right. Uh, moving on strategic plan update.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. So you can go on to the next slide. And it's going to be very hard to see from where you're sitting, but I apologize for that. But. Uh, as, as you recall, we had a discussion about the strategic plan and gave you an update and, you know, we had some good dialogue during the retreat on October 29th and. We just wanted to get back with you quickly, um, following that retreat and, and really, um, I guess. Connect the dots and connect back to, uh, some of the other things that we, we have talked about, which is our North Star goals. Uh, which, you know, I'm not going to spend time reviewing those North Star goals. You know what those North Star goals are. But the connection to it is, you know, the board imperatives that were part of our strategic planning process that are in the middle there. The North Star goals, which are around, uh, those board imperatives that make those connections, the work that needs to be completed. And. Basically those North Star goals are my goals. Uh, that we have worked on and we have discussed and put into place, uh, for the 21, 22 school year. And then in the light green are the strategic plan goals or objectives that are to be accomplished for year one. Uh, so we believe that this graphic really ties it together. Um, because a, as you're aware, uh, that we communicated at the October 29th meeting. You know, our team is struggling a little bit with. A, a word that we use a lot, which is operationalizing the plan. And, uh, one of the things that we're struggling with is some of the language that's in the strategic planner and some of the goals. It, it, it's not hard to, it's very unclear to identify what are we trying to accomplish? So. Um, Mr. Lovell, who in his prior life. Um, has done a lot of strategic planning work, just presented at OSBA about strategic planning. You know, and I think he said it very well. What are we trying to say? And what's, what does this mean when we're reading through it? And I think that's where we're struggling is trying to operationalize some of these pieces and put them into play. While still working on the North Star goals and the board imperatives. So, uh, my, I, I guess my, my, my ask of you is. That we would like, and I think Mr. Evans said it very well at the retreat, because I, I think I communicated this pretty clearly, that I'm just struggling with understanding the language and saying. What does this mean? How does this really look in our district? And what's the outcome that we desire from it? And I think what we would desire from you is the ability to continue to fly the plane. You know, we, we're going to continue our work on all of these goals. We're going to continue to work on the strategic plan goals. And the priorities and objectives in year one, but we would also like to bring back. Uh, another view, another look for you to consider. Not only on, on all of this, but as kind of in collaboration with it. Um, it doesn't mean that we don't agree with the goals. It doesn't mean we don't agree with. Uh, all the different pieces to it, but we, we think there's some language clarity that we could bring to it that'll make it more operationalized. Not only for us, but for the rest of our district staff. And, you know, that's the biggest challenge that we're having is when we go forward and talk about it. Think we're hearing from our staff is, I don't understand what that means, or help me understand what this, this area is, or. You know, help me understand what does this mean for me? How does it bring us to closer to this outcome? So. And I think what I would like to see is that we leverage that expertise of Mrs. Mr. Lovell and. And Mrs. Wagner did some of this work and really allow us to kind of take a, a, another crack at showing you some. Other examples of how we think we can bring this plan and kind of bring it more to life. And kind of extend the life of it for this district. So, um. That was really the overall overview of the update that we, we wanted to bring forward to you, but. I really wanted to make sure that you clearly understood that we are still working on all of this. We have our plan teams. Uh, we had our, our, uh, kickoff, re-kickoff meeting, our refocus meetings. Uh, the teams are energized, they're ready to do the work. But I think there's some clarity that would help, uh, to be able to move us forward, uh, through the rest of this process. And again, I think I want to be very clear. It's not. Um, in my mind, changing the, the overall, uh, strategic plan, but it might be just. Trying to improve it and make it better and make it operationally, uh, sound for us to be able to move forward with.
I'm completely fine with that.
And I, I, I'll, I'll say that the piece that's missing, you know, one of the pieces that's missing for me is. You know, we have a, a very clearly defined mission. We have a very clearly defined vision and we have those. The, the values that are clearly defined. And then we have the Aves that's separate, you know, talking about academic achievement and vibrant community partnerships. Excellence and ops, or operations and, uh, student centered culture. Those all speak to me. But when I look at the goals, it doesn't help me understand how am I going to get to those, those points? Or how do I get? You know, wrapped around those ideas, because those to me are very clear. And when we went and looked at, you know, I asked Mr. Lovell, give me some examples of other districts where you've worked. And there were clearly defined like beliefs that were in the, in the statements. There were clearly defined, you know, outcomes that were listed and. You know, I think we have all the components. It's trying to bring it together. So it's easily explainable to the community and. You know, I'll use. Let me find this document. I think. This is the one we have. And it's not very clear to understand. And if I put this in front of people, I think they struggle with. You know, define KPIs for district by developing data analysis functionality and measurement to support academic goals at district and building levels. I don't know how to explain that to someone. I don't know how to connect that for people.
I, I think, Mr. Wilson, you know, we've had some of these discussions before. I would go back and collapse year one, two, three, one, two, and three together. And we had metrics or KPIs already established around some of those. And then just ask the team, how do we get there in three years? And if this roadmap didn't quite get you there, it may be combining some things from year two earlier, delaying something. But at the end of the day, it was in three years. How do we make progress towards that last goal? And I think that's the element that, you know. Needed to be pulled forward. And so, you know, at the end of year three, we're trying to do X and it's. Either a definition or it's a number or a metric or a time scale, but that way it's in the three year roadmap. And it got a little disconnected, I think, in pulling it apart. So that would be my suggestion of combining it together. This is where we're trying to go. And let the team define a little bit of that, because there are lots of ways to get someplace.
And I think what, what we would commit to doing is. You know, monthly updates of where are we at and what, what, what have we accomplished and what have we changed? Cause I, obviously this was a plan that you all approved and, and we were in support of, but I, I would agree that some things just. Maybe got lost and, and I, I think there were some.
I think it'd be the actions, just be able to articulate how the actions. Take a step or five steps towards that goal. And how it's improving a metric or a timeline. And that will be what my ask would have been.
I just appreciate the flexibility of the board to be able to operate and. Bring, continue to bring you updates that would, you know, I think improve the plan even more. So.
All right. Moving on, staff development days. Staff development days, sorry.
So, uh, this was, you know, obviously I appreciate the board members, you know, even considering. Uh, staff development days and, and looking at some proposals. Um, and I recognize, I, I certainly understand that, you know, we have to be sensitive to our community and. Certainly I, I don't bring recommendations like this lightly. Unless I believe there's significant importance around, uh, the idea. So. I know that we talked at this special meeting, uh, about trying to bring forth a recommendation, um, last week to. Allow us to have some staff collaboration time. You know, we just got test results in from air. Uh, we have map data that we need to look at. So. Um, you can see on the screen. Excuse me, my proposal, uh, would be to look at, uh, January 18th and 19th, and that would be my recommendation that those be staff collaboration days. Um, students would have personal learning days directed by the teachers or coursework. Uh, again, within the pace pacing that they're in with the, the curriculum that they're currently working through. Uh, why this makes sense to do right after Martin Luther King Day is that if you look at the length of the quarters. Uh, second quarter is 43 days, uh, third quarter, it would still remain 47 days, but it would be 45 days in direct instruction with. Staff, uh, being present in the room, the other quarters are, are in the lower 40s. So it really doesn't create an imbalance. It actually probably helps balance it out a little better. Uh, but it still accomplishes the goal. It still allows, um, our staff to get in and have the collaboration time that they so desperately need. To be able to work with their colleagues, uh, looking at, uh, data, looking at their students, making plans for. You know, that's the beginning of the third quarter. They have a half a year to still address some of those gaps. Um, leading into the end of the school year. So. Uh, you know, I really do believe that this would be the best option, you know, putting it in now. Obviously we've addressed it in the next calendar. So, um. And as I mentioned before, you know. This is not a model and, and nothing that you approved tonight, as you saw in the next calendar, it's not setting a precedent. Obviously we don't have it in January of the next school year, because we do believe by. November of next year, we'll have that data and it gives us even more time to dig in, uh, to address some of those, uh. Learning targets and I'll use interrupted learning, uh, potentially from things that they've had in the past. So. Happy to answer any questions about that, uh, recommendation.
I actually have a question just more about the calendar now that I'm looking at it since. I believe the high school, we, we were talking about po- possibly front loading or taking off some days. In the beginning of the winter break, which we didn't think that was a good idea, but. As I look at the calendar, the third quarter, I mean, sorry, the second quarter is ending on the 13th. But students are expected to take final exams. The last week of December, I mean, the last school week of December, how does that? Mrs. Wagner, do you know how that works? I mean, because there it looks like there's at least two weeks of instruction that they should be getting for the second quarter that they're being tested on. At the end of the calendar year.
We come back on January. It's not listed on there.
It's the.
Is it?
No, it's not. No.
I don't believe so.
I think it's, I think it's the fourth or the fifth.
Have to pull up the actual. Yeah, if you could pull that up. Um, but part of the, the reason for wanting to have those, um, semester exams prior to. Uh, break is to make sure that students are really fully engaged in the content that they're going to be tested on. They don't have two weeks break. And then try to come back. There'd be more time that they would have to review. For the exams. So they actually, we, we would lose some new instructional days because they would need more review time because the students have been away from it for two weeks. And so even though their exams may finish, they may take the semester exam and have another week or so of instruction. Um, left, there are still valuable learning opportunities that they can be engaged in and still move through that content, especially for a year long course.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand. I'm just trying to understand the grading system in terms of how you. As a student, you look at your quarter one, your quarter two grade, and then your final exam. So you don't know what your quarter two grade is going to be before you're taking. Your final exam for that semester.
And that wouldn't happen anyways. I don't, the, when grades are turned in. Students take their exams prior to the grades being turned in anyways in a regular semester. So that's nothing that's different.
Okay.
They would still have access to.
Yeah.
My only question is, do you have support from all staff and administration for this?
Our, our principals and, uh, staff members that have contacted me after the last recommendation were just appreciative that the board would consider. Uh, giving them collaboration time. And they said, it's so desperately needed. I got stopped in parking lots. I got stopped on the way into schools. Um, so I do believe that this, I, you know, I don't have any actual data, Mr. Mercurio of like. Hey, do I have 75% of the staff supporting it? But. Everybody that I've talked to and have stopped me, nobody's reached out and said, that was a dumb idea, Mr. Lewis. Why would you even think of doing that? It was more of just really appreciate the opportunity to. Get in there and really I think it's a unique opportunity that's not just collaborating within their building. We're going to challenge them to go outside their building and go to another building. And, you know, a third grade team at Maple Dale might want to go talk to a third grade team at Montgomery. And, and look at, you know, there are some practices that Sims and Montgomery do. That Maple Dale and Blue Ash don't do. And we're seeing some positive results from it. So I said, you know, I was having Mrs. Ralston's evaluation conference and she said. You know, look at some of these things and look at our results. And I'm like, that's amazing. You know, are we sharing that across? All four buildings. And she's like, you know, everybody, and I said, well, that's, this is an opportunity right here. We could really. You know, get our, the rest of our teams looking at this model and you're seeing these positive gains. That's the kind of stuff we want teachers to collaborate about. So. Uh, yeah, it's the horizontal alignment plus the vertical alignment, but. Our principals, our assistant principals are absolutely on board and, and believe in, in our principals especially because I. I called them together for a meeting before coming to you last week and said, I, if you don't believe in this, I don't want to take it forward, but. I need 100% all seven of you to, if you don't support me, tell me now. Um, and everybody said, no, you 100% have our support. So. Uh, and that, that means the world because they know their buildings. They know what are their teachers need and, and they're focused on making sure that they give them that. Uh, really important collaborative time.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Lewis, when are you wanting a vote on that? Is that part of?
I think it's on the.
It is. You're right. Yeah, okay.
Just one clarifying question.
Yep.
Just like we looked at for 22, 23 school year. What are the total number of instructional days and then total number that are in person and total number that are. You know, if you will, directed at home. I'm just curious on the balance for the year, for this academic year. Yeah.
Well, currently on, on the calendar, it's online. Student days are 175, teacher days are 185. And it says the calendar was approved May 5th, 2021. For the 21, 22 school year. So, and, and just a reminder, those still would count as student days. So there would not be a reduction. It would just be a change in learning model.
So if the answer was 175 instructional days with two of them being remote versus next year where we'll have five remote. Okay, thank you.
No, I think we had five. Cause the first two in the beginning were before students started.
Yeah, the three at the beginning and two at the end are just staff.
The school is over and. Right. Any other questions from the board? Okay, I need a motion to approve the staff development days. Actually, before I get a motion, Mrs. Weber, can you read the resolution? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, whereas the board continues to comply with the statutory requirements. Of Ohio revised code 3313.48, now therefore be it resolved by the board as follows. Pursuant to Ohio revised code 3313.48C, the. 2021, 22 school calendar. the 202122 school calendar for the Sycamore Community School District shall be amended to convert the originally scheduled student classroom days on January 18th, 2022, and January 19th, 2022, to Staff Professional Development Days. Number two, in doing so, the 202122 school calendar for the Sycamore Community School District remains in compliance with the requirements of Ohio Revised Code 3313.48. Number three, the Superintendent is authorized and directed to communicate these calendar changes to district staff, students, parents, and any joint vocational schools, private and charter schools for which the district is required to provide transportation. And number four, it is found and determined that all formal actions of this Board concerning or related to the adoption of this resolution were conducted in an open meeting of the Board, and all deliberations of this Board that resulted in such formal action were adopted in meeting open to the public in compliance with all applicable requirements of the Ohio Revised Code.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. I need a motion to approve the Staff Development Days as read in the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
And Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on, I need a motion for the approval of the Construction Change Directive at Sycamore Junior High Construction Project.
So moved. Seconded.
Mr. Level, anything?
There's no comments on this one, pretty standard.
All right, any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Just let me clarify, Mr. Mercurio made the motion and Mr. Ballant seconded.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the Change Order for Sims Elementary Renovation Project, GMP number three.
So moved. Second.
This one was actually directed by the district. When we did the entire security system, kind of looking at cameras, access points and things like that, we did not add one to that new playground. And just for the safety and security of our students out there, we wanted to make sure that we had a camera.
All right, any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye, motion passes.
I need a motion for the approval of the Change Order for Sycamore Junior High Construction Project.
So moved. Second.
Are we in the junior high or high school? I'm sorry.
Junior high.
I'm sorry. Nothing, nothing of important, I mean, they're all important, but nothing major to discuss.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the Change Order for Sycamore High School Renovation Project, GMP number two.
So moved. Second.
The one that I want to point out here is the $41,508 change order for the lower level flooring changes. At the beginning of the year, when that phase was finishing up and the base bid was that we were going to have exposed concrete in kind of the industrial tech area, the art wing. What happened is that through the construction process, they had to do a lot more digging up of the floor to put pipes in for some of that space. And as we walked it, it was uneven and it just did not look good. They tried to finish it up. So what we made the decision to do was go ahead and put kinetics flooring over top of that concrete area.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye, motion passes. Anything else, Mr. Lewis?
Just a couple of quick things in the essence of time. Hope everyone comes out to our Always an Aviator Capital Campaign kickoff tomorrow at Montgomery Inn at 6:30 PM. Hope to see everyone there. We'll have a social hour, a little, well, not a social hour, a social 30 minutes, and then we'll get right into the campaign. The variety show is Friday and Saturday evening at the high school at 7:00 PM. The high school craft show is Saturday, 9:00, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So if you need to pick up some, some crafty items, there you go, head on over. I'm going to get me some ornaments, I hope, while I'm there. I've got a new tree, so excited about picking up a few of those items. And then I think, you know, last and certainly not least, but, you know, I'd just like to wish all of our students and our staff, our families in our community a happy and safe Thanksgiving, since we will not have another meeting till after Thanksgiving. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and happy Thanksgiving to you as well. All right, I need a motion for the approval of the Treasurer's Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Mrs. Weber, do you have anything you'd like to point out?
Hey, I do want to point out one item on the Treasurer's Consent Agenda, and that's under item number two, approval of appropriation increase of $1 million. That is related to the recent approval of a contract to move forward the replacement of the high school gymnasium roof from the next year's budget to this year's budget. So we've added $1 million to be able to get that accomplished within this year before that work starts to take place here. Is that underway now, Mr. Level, or is that probably in the spring? Okay. And when we talk a little bit later about the five-year forecast, we have had, we'll have a corresponding reduction of our capital improvement budget allocation in the 2023 fiscal year. So while it's an increase this year, we'll see a corresponding reduction next year.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the financial reports from October 2021.
So moved. Second.
Just to make sure, Mr. Ballant made the motion.
And Mr. Evans.
Thank you. Just a few things to point out in this month's financial report. I wanted to follow up. We've talked a couple of times about the COVID stipend being paid out of the general fund and being reimbursed by federal funds for the salary portion of that. We were able to get that accomplished in October. So you see that reduction coming through in the salary line. We'll be processing the change for the fringe benefit portion of that cost here in November to be reflected in next month's report. I did also want to point out, and this is something that just will give you an idea of the kind of things we'll be looking at in our Master Facility Plan Budget Update next month. We now have a new line within the budget expenditure area. As we go through each month, working with SHP and looking at the budget, we determine, are there areas within the current budget allocations that we had set aside at the beginning of the project that can be released to other parts of the budget? So at this point in time, we really look through a lot of the soft cost areas of the budget, which would be things like permit fees, printing costs, those things that because of where we are within the projects themselves have come in under budget estimates. They probably were really conservative in their estimates, making sure that they had plenty of funds for these things. As we continue to find those be released, we're going to either reallocate as needed or put them in now into this district-wide contingency fund, which our thought would be, we could reallocate those dollars as we either saw needs. They would be approved via change order or an additional contract as needed based on where we decided to reallocate them into the budget. So for example, one, one example of this was Green's budget for their soft cost dollars that had come in under budget. We knew right away that because of some of the challenges we had at Green with just poor soil and things like that, that they were going to need and where we were with what percentage of our contingency we had already spent, we just went ahead and put those soft cost dollars that were not needed in the green budget up into the green contingency. So they'll be used in the same building. The district-wide contingency will continue to have discussions about that as we see needs in the other buildings. So that's just an update that we've included in this month's budget summary for, for the Master Facility Plan.
I do have a question on that. You know, as we wind up, or if we wind up with excess funds or overly conservative estimates that we wind up with excess cash, is there ability to return that to the taxpayers versus not throwing it into some other slush spending fund? I mean, my expectation as a taxpayer would have been, if you didn't need the money, please return it to them.
There are a couple of things that you can do, Mr. Evans. One would be you could utilize those dollars for other capital improvements throughout the district. So things that, five years down the road, perhaps, that we didn't complete in the initial projects, maybe on one of the elementaries that wasn't part of it, you could use those funds for that as opposed to utilizing general fund money that, like we do now. So that would just be a way that, as opposed to using operating dollars, you could do that. I do believe, and I would have to check in on this, that you can request, but I think it may require some kind of court, like some kind of probate court approval to move those dollars back into the bond retirement fund to pay off your outstanding debt. So that would be something we could check into as a potential way. It's not necessarily writing a check to every taxpayer, but what it is would be reducing the amount of taxes they would have to pay for the bond retirement at that point in time. So that would be an option.
I know we have some other capital bonds that have a shorter life to them, and that would quickly reduce some of the millage rates out there if we could retire those bonds quickly.
Yeah, so that would be an option.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Anything else from the board? Thank you, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the five-year forecast.
So moved.
Let me make sure, who, who made the motion, please? Okay.
Mr. Mercurio. Well, Mr. Mercurio and then Mr. Commerford.
Okay. The hour is getting a little bit late, but I think it's important just for us to have some highlights of, of the five-year forecast. As you're all well aware, the Board of Education is asked to, by law, to approve the five-year forecast twice a year, once by the end of November, with an update by the end of May and each year. Our Board of Education also looks at it a third time in January as part of our tax budget that we submit to the county auditor. So we take three official looks at our five-year forecast every year and actually have it approved, but it is a document we can look at at any time as we're making decisions, particularly those that have long-term impact on the district's finances. It's, it's something that is required by the state. It's one of the tools that the state utilizes when they're determining if districts are in financial emergency or trouble. That's not been something that has been an issue for us here at Sycamore and the timeframe that we've utilized it, but for other districts. It is a, it's an important tool that they utilize to start to target and intervene when districts are having financial difficulty. It includes three years of actual data in both revenue and expenditures for just the general operating fund. So it doesn't include things like our bond retirement fund, the construction fund that we've talked about. It's really just the general operating fund, which is the primary area for us here in Sycamore where we collect property taxes to continue our operations. So we are already, believe it or not, up to the 2526 school year. It doesn't seem, seem possible that that is where we are at this point in time already. So, all right, Mr. Fritz, if you could move on just to the next slide. Just to give you a few updates on real estate taxes. First of all, as we've seen, we've had really little impact on our real estate collections due to COVID that I think was surprising for all of us. We are seeing some Board of Revision activity where particularly many of our hotels are asking for reductions in their property value. And the way we have approached that is we have been able to negotiate with many of them to have a one-year or two-year reduction in values to kind of ride out COVID and have it go back to the value that it was prior to that time. So we see no long-term impact on our tax collections from those changes. Not as much activity within the office areas as what I anticipated, but we'll continue to monitor that over time. The other area in real estate tax is in our tangible personal property tax area, which right now we're just showing really stable funding. I do want to make you aware that one of the things that is likely going to impact this revenue stream in probably the last two years, and once we get better estimates, we'll add this as well, that the natural gas pipeline that's going through the district will start collecting additional taxes. And I believe the initial estimates were right around a half a million dollars a year from that. But they don't start, or they, they don't add the value until it's complete from beginning to end. So we're watching it kind of go through our area. I think it still has quite a ways to go before they'll actually be able to utilize the pipeline. But once it's in place, that should bring some additional dollars to the district as well. But right now, we're not reflecting them because we're not exactly sure when it'll start to hit, hit our books. State budget is also an update in, in this new forecast. And one of the things we've talked about is that we really should see no reduction in funding this year. And as you look at the forecast, that is not what is reflected when you look at the restricted grants and aid. The reason for that is the state budget is net of scholarship funds that go for the John Peterson Scholarship to other districts. However, we are no longer having an offset to our other revenue from those dollars going out of the district to fund those scholarships. So you really, right now, kind of have to look at this unrestricted grants and aid and other revenue in total to see how that, those dollars are flowing in. The one thing that I think is interesting though, at least at this point in time, when you look at the model that we utilize with the company that helps us with our forecasting, is that if this funding model phases in as is anticipated, we're going to actually start seeing increases in our state revenue in, in this year. And that's something, you know, not, not huge, but at least we're going to start to see, I believe, more funding come to the district through the per pupil funding formula. And that's in part because of the way the new model works and funding the cost of instruction for, for students as well as providing more funding to reimburse us for our transportation costs. So those two factors are really going to be helpful. So overall, really, we think we'll be able to maintain the kind of revenue that we had projected in our last forecast. And so don't see any real issues and may actually see some increased revenue on the horizon. I think one of the things we pointed out last time is that this is the last year we'll be collecting any TPP reimbursement that goes away in, completely in fiscal year 23. But that's something we projected for many years now, so, okay. Onto expenditures, the, the expenditure side of the, of the model does include the impact through 2024 of the collective bargaining agreement with the Sycamore Education Association and projections for OPEC and the, which, whose contract expires at the end of this school year. We have included the increase in insurance premium for 2022, which was 9%, which is, which was an amount we had not seen in quite some time, and then 5% in outgoing year. So we'll continue to work with Butler Health Plan to be able to, to monitor that and determine if there are any other changes that might need to be made in regards to our insurance programs. In the area of. In the area of purchase services, that was an area that we really think thought we would would see those costs go down this year because we had included a lot of additional services in COVID, for example, leasing additional space, adding additional building substitutes, so on and so forth. We are not really experiencing that one because we are still leasing the space, additional space at the Kenwood Road Office. We are actually now leasing space to house our temporary transportation facility. And one of the things that we're finding out as well with the labor market is that in some, at least in some of our support areas such as physical therapy, occupational therapy, school psychologists and and counselor psychiatrists primarily, is that we haven't been able to find direct employees for those services. And so we are doing a lot more purchase service work and contracted employees in those areas. So we're not experiencing the reduction in the in that part of our budget that we thought we might have had. We're we're going to have to really kind of tear that all apart in looking at our our out years as we get ready to build our budget next year. But that was something that we we had not anticipated. And finally, in terms of expenditures, if you look at line 5.010 with operating transfers out, we did shift a million dollars in that line from fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 22 so that we could move forward with the roofing project. Overall, you know, we are still looking healthy. Really, in in many ways, from a cash balance standpoint through the entire forecast, when what I'm when I we always look at is where we're starting to see where our expenses are exceeding our revenue to the point that we might be looking at another levy. You know, looking at at 2021 was this year. We thought we might have to be on when we were on the balance in 16. That didn't happen, 2022. I do not believe that that's going to happen either. So we're looking at at least six years. Looking at 2023, I think we are also still in in good shape. When you when you actually look at these, you have to kind of look at fiscal year 24 because you would approve the levy in 23 and start collecting in 24. So I think we are we are almost to the point where I I would anticipate with some work, we can we can stretch this levy until 2024. That's going to take, you know, working through our strategic plan, making sure that we're we're doing all the things we need to do and and to make sure we can implement that plan. You know, making sure that we look at some of the enrollment growth that we have as well to to cover that. But I I feel good about the forecast in terms of of being able to stretch it past my real retirement. So that's exciting.
Mrs. Weber, do you mean when you say stretch it to 2024, meaning we could do the election of or have that?
I would be the thought we could actually have the election and it would begin to impact the fiscal year 25.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber.
Yeah, thank you for the report, Mrs. Weber. And, you know, I just want to add that, you know, again, looking at asking the community for more operating funds. You know, this board committed to five years. And if we can stretch that now, if I'm doing my math correctly, for another three years, you know, that's significant impact to our community. And it's great work by you and your team to make sure that our budgets remain in line, on target. And thank you for all that, and thank you for your team.
Well, I I would also attribute it to just having a really vibrant community. You know, I mean, it's it's kept our our property values where they need to be. We're still having some some growth in our community. That's not happening everywhere, so it's really those partnerships that we have with our municipalities and and still seeing people wanting to come here and have their kids educated here. So it's a lot of different factors that make that make that happen.
This means you'll continue to work till 2024, then?
I don't know.
Yeah, I.
By then, Mr. Lewis is going to be tired of me, I'm pretty sure.
I I just, this is exciting to look at. And I I just, you know, I know that there's a fair amount of conservatism built into this with the real estate on the revenues. And as you mentioned, the purchase purchased services going forward into those out years, there's probably a lot of places here where, you know, we could really dig in. I do hope that we continue at a retreat in February for the new board members and the new board that will be together that we continue to make that the financial retreat. And we give everybody a really good understanding of each line of the five-year forecast because this is one of the most important governing documents that the board is oversees. Thank you.
Thanks as well, Mrs. Weber. I think this is excellent and really happy to hear the projection on the next operating levy to be stretched for eight years. I think that's echo the comments. That's terrific news and a reflection of a lot of people's efforts. The question I had was on the line 1020 tangential tangible personal property tax, the TPP. I I thought I had heard you say that that was disappearing. But when I look at that line, and maybe I'm just not catching the comment correctly, it looked like there was nothing in 2019 and 2020, and then there was 4 million in 2021 and 2022 and going. So I just I'm trying to reconcile the what's on the document versus your comments. And I just want to make sure I understood your comments correctly.
Okay, that I I apologize. I those dollars are actually included in the and and there are two different sources. The tangible personal property tax reflected there are related to public utilities. And in the two years prior in 19 and 20, they're just reflected in the general property tax line. They're included there. Then they start being separated out in fiscal year 21. The TPP reimbursement that's being phased out is actually in 1.050, the property tax allocation where you can see those dollars trailing off. In fiscal year 23, what's still remaining in that account line are the homestead and rollback reimbursements that we get from the state. And what that is tied to is the 12 and a half percent credit tax credit that everybody gets on their home. So the state does reimburse us for that. So that's where I apologize that.
No, thanks for the clarity. I I had followed the words and and I think it's the numbers are clear than the what you were referring to is 1.050.
Right, yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the board? Mrs. Weber.
Just one, just one. You mentioned the per pupil expenditure for Sycamore. If the funding formula goes through as planned, do you know approximately what that would take us up to 600 to?
I don't know right off off the top of my head because I'd have to go back and look at how much the enrollment gross is included in there.
If we assume it to be the same, do you know the absolute dollar amount that?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Do you know the impact of the absolute dollar amount from the funding formula? Forget per pupil.
Oh, you know, actually, I think I I still don't know that we're going to be getting to the the level of private schools. So that's still an area that I know the Alliance is dedicated to helping us with and will continue to work on with with the state.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
And Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the authorization authorization to file a modified tax budget for fiscal year 2023.
So moved.
Seconded.
This is an annual resolution that the county auditor requires to allow us not to file a very obsolete tax budget form and instead utilize our five-year forecast for the tax budget document.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the resolution requesting the county auditor to make advanced payment of taxes pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 321.34.
So moved.
Seconded.
This is an annual resolution that the county auditor requires so that he can advance tax payments to us as they're collected as opposed to waiting until the final settlement. So it allows us to start actually drawing our real estate taxes. And for example, in January, once the first bill goes out as opposed to waiting until April. So it helps us with cash flow considerations to be able to do so.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. Next up, policy update, second reading, E B C E, policy number anti-fraud and protection for reporting safety and fraud violations.
I think Mrs. Weiss, this is the second reading of the anti-fraud protection and reporting safety and fraud violations policy. As part of our annual audit, the question came up as to whether the district had a formal policy regarding fraud and prevention as well as being the reporting requirements as such. Thank you to Mr. Evans and Mr. Comaford for providing some samples from other districts that we have integrated into the the policy from the the last reading. So just provides a little bit more definition about what what fraud is and making a very direct statement about the board's commitment to the prevention of fraud. So again, this is the second reading. If you have any questions or concerns or comments, please make sure you forward those to either myself or to Mr. Comaford as the policy liaison. We'll bring it back on December 1st for final reading and approval, which will get this on the books prior to the wrap-up of our audit.
That's great. Thanks for adding the the additional clarity into the policy. I think that really helps.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Comaford and Mr. Evans for your input into that. So we will have a vote, a final vote, a final reading and a vote on that on December 1st, as Mrs. Weber said. All right, moving on, I need a motion for the approval of the personnel consent agenda, which includes items 3 D E and 4 from the addendum.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to other Board of Education business, we have our organizational meeting and 2022 meeting schedule. The board will review a proposed meeting schedule for 2022. The proposed date for the organizational meeting is set for January 5th. Anyone has an issue with that date, please get in touch with Carla Clark immediately, please. Thank you. Moving on, number two legislative liaison report, Mr. Mercurio.
Yeah, I'll try and be brief. It's, as you know, it's the end of the year and there's not a lot going on. The bills just kind of stay stagnant. But there is a couple of things to mention. First, I want to thank Mrs. Weber for the sending along the Sycamore Support Letter to Senator Wilson for Senate Bill 1, that's the Financial Literacy Bill. With the passing of the bill, Ohio becomes the 10th state to require personal finance education in schools. And we're also the largest state to do it with over 600 public schools. And Sycamores and Senator Wilson have been at the at this one for a long time. So it was nice to see that and that. Thank you for sending that letter on behalf of the board and the admin team. The other bill that is getting some movement is House Bill 126. This is the one regards to the process for local governments to contest property values. They did hold the third and and fourth hearing on November 9th and again on November 16th. First one had 13 opponents, no proponents. The other one, 18 opponents, five proponents. If you recall, this is the the bill that would eliminate a Board of Education's right to file complaints and counter complaints over property values. It kind of eliminates the Board of Revision system that's been in place. And we do have some representation by our Alliance for High Quality Education who did offer some testimony. And I noticed there's a number of treasures at some of our partner schools that submitted testimony as well. Mrs. Weber, do you have anything to add?
We we reached out to Senator Blessings' office as well because he is involved in the Senate Finance Committee. So we made him aware of some of our of our concerns regarding this bill, mostly just because it would take it from being what seems to be a pretty balanced process for these complaints to really not giving political subdivisions much of a voice in the process.
So that'll be one to watch.
Yeah.
But I don't have anything else. The the other bills that we've been tracking, there's been no movement.
I I do want to make you aware of another item that actually is really would will be really positive if it comes to fruition. But we were contacted last week by, I believe, the Mason Superintendent, that right, Mr. Lewis, to make us aware that I think that the House has some COVID money remaining, some ESSER funds that they have the ability to reallocate to, I guess, anything that they would want that would meet those qualifications. And there is some traction to utilize those funds to help districts that received a very low amount of COVID aid on a per pupil basis. I mean, there there are probably five districts in Ohio that got zero aid because they have very few students who are socio-economically disadvantaged. So for example, one of those districts would be Olentanji, which is up near Columbus. They still had a lot of costs to make sure that they could get their kids in school. So there's a push right now to recognize those districts that are in that situation and potentially provide us some more COVID relief. So I think for us, you know, where the current projection of what they're looking at would be another million dollars, which would be super helpful in being able to meet some of our issues around interrupted learning or even to just look back at some of those costs that we've already incurred to help with with that as well. So working with with Mason to try to get that to move forward. And again, it's one that kind of falls in in Senator Blessings' area because he's been the person that's been primarily working with primary and secondary education funding. It isn't there quite yet because it would start in the House, but eventually it would it would get to him. So we're working with him to make sure he's aware of the legislation as well. So we'll keep our fingers crossed, but I'm hearing some I'm hearing actually some good support from the Ohio Department of Education as well. So that's good.
That would be great. Keep an eye on that. Thank you, Mr. Mercurio and Mrs. Weber. Moving on to Sycamore Advisory Commission update, Mr. Comaford.
Yes, I will be brief. The Sycamore Advisory Commission met last Monday, November 8th. As you'll recall, both Mr. Lewis and I were at Columbus at the OSBA conference. I'm happy to report, however, that Leslie Combs provided a superintendent's update and Mrs. Zelvy gave the district presentation on mental health, which my understanding was very well received by the Advisory Commission. So in addition, we have an agenda item coming up, I think, one later, where we were asking for a formal approval of the new members. So I'll wait till we get to that agenda where we can move ahead as you desire.
Great, thank you, Mr. Comaford. Number four, student achievement accelerated math. I added this on. This has been an issue that I guess has been dear to. I added this on. This has been an issue that I guess has been dear to my heart since I actually joined the board in 2017. And I didn't want to lose sight of it. And I wanted to talk to primarily, I guess, Mrs. Wagner and Mrs. Tompkins about the plan for accelerated math. And we actually allowed some students in eighth grade to take an algebra class at the junior high, even though they did not qualify through the, the gate that we had set up in terms of the qualifications for a student to, to be accepted into that program. What we saw were those students flourished. And since that time, we have opened up accelerated math and given those opportunities to students in seventh and eighth grade. And the plan initially was to have that go down into the green school as well as into the elementary school. So I wanted to ask the two of you where this fits in, because I was thinking that this might be a perfect spot with the curriculum audit that we're doing, realizing that the current curriculum audit that we're undergoing is for the four main areas of learning, math, et cetera, math, history, science, and social studies. But wanted to understand where the, some of these gifted programs are coming into in relation to being evaluated and looked at, and where in a timeline can we expect the opportunities for students to go down into the lower grades? So I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but I would be happy to sit down with you guys to provide the history of this and then just kind of see what our game plan is because that has been something that we've been talking about now for many years.
Yeah, Mrs. Weiss, we'd be happy to, to engage in that conversation with you. I, I was not aware that the plan was to move it to grade three. I do know that the first year that we used the accelerated math matrix in grades five and six was 1920. And so we're looking at those students to, so there's been one year, if you will, we're in the start of the second year. So we're definitely tracking those students and making sure that they're being successful because we wanted to use that data to make decisions moving forward. But, you know, both Mrs. Tompkins and I want to make sure that all students have access to all learning opportunities. And so we are happy to have conversations about what the goal of that program would be. Is the goal to get to calculus? Well, there's numerous ways to get to calculus as a senior besides an accelerated math placement. So just looking at different options. But yeah, we'd be happy to, to have those conversations moving forward. Absolutely.
Okay, great. Then I will reach out to you and we'll get something on the calendar.
That'd be great.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right. Last order of business, I need a motion for the approval of the Sycamore Advisory Commission members.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else from the board? Anyone? Mr. Lewis? Mrs. Weber? Mrs. Wagner?
I just have one comment. I'd like to extend a Happy Thanksgiving to everyone on the board and everyone here at the meeting and everyone listening online. So thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Commerford. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Meeting adjourned.